To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to remind everybody that Norton Media is recording the meeting. If anybody else is, we just need to know. And I just want to thank everybody for accommodating the meeting here tonight. I guess the select board needed to meet here tonight, so we moved from the school to here. So I know it's kind of cramped inside quarters, but we appreciate everybody being flexible. All right, so we're going to start with the minutes. You guys all had a chance to look at the May 9 minutes? Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for May 9? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, the warrants, that's me. I've reviewed and approved the following warrants: School expense warrants, May 9, 2024, School payroll warrants, May 2, 2024, I wish to add to them into public record. And you guys are out.
Okay, so for the YALP, the fifth grade students made their way to the move-up day visit to the middle school today, May 23. Students got to meet Mr. Hayward and Mr. Rollstein in the sixth grade teacher teams. They got a tour of the Norr Middle School and even got to see the amazing play Wonka, an amazing day to help them transition into the sixth grade. For upcoming third grade students from the LGN and JCS, we have third graders coming up to us in the upcoming weeks. A family informational night, and Mr. Gigan and Mr. Bilau will be having their yearly visits to each third grade classroom to talk with them about their transition to YALP. Our fourth graders will also check out the second and third floors of where they might be next year. For Memorial Day, our students will be doing readings throughout the day to help students remember and understand why Memorial Day is important and how it's not just a day off or a reason to barbecue. We have Field Day for both grades on June 10, packed full with some fun, engaged outdoor activities. Next week, we have our HAPTO Buy One Get One Free Scholastic Book Fair in the middle school, which everyone loves to get a book or two for the summer. Our fifth grade has an anti-bullying assembly from Animal Adventures from the HAPTO coming next week, with our students learning not to bully by seeing, touching, and hearing about such animals as a frog, chinchilla, python, armadillo, and kangaroo. It's a great message while being an incredible experience. And, oh yeah, a lot more coming from the YALP, including the sliding of Mr. G and Mr. B.
All right, so from NMS, Drumco was currently in the middle of their run for the show Willie Wonka. Last evening, students of NMS performed to a packed house and are looking forward to the same this evening and tomorrow night as well. Tickets are still available. NMS just hosted our Best Day Ever celebration yesterday as a reward for all of our students' hard work on the fundraiser this year. Collectively, the NMS community raised in excess of $12,000 to go towards various efforts here at NMS. Many thanks to those families and members of the community who made gifts towards the fundraiser. MCAT season is almost over at NMS, with our eighth grade getting ready to wrap things up with civics. MCAT's coming up next week. I think that would be great.
Brand new this year.
Luckily. Spring sports have also wrapped for the season, and we want to congratulate all those student athletes who participated in spring sports. We have begun the field trip season here at NMS as well. Some of our sixth graders traveled to Buttonwood Zoo earlier this week, while some of our eighth graders just traveled to Kimball Farm and will be traveling to New York City next Friday.
And so for the JCS, students have been enjoying days of adventure at Norr Outdoor Center, thanks to a wonderful partnership with YMCA and with the support of the JCS SPO, and the tremendous voluntary support from dozens of parents, including two awesome school committee members. Every day in kindergarten throughout third grade has or will out of tomorrow spent a full day at Camp Finnberg, taking our rope challenges, playing games, and enjoying nature. Students walk from the JCS to Finnberg and back, even in the hot weather. This is our second year of these special days, and we hope to see the partnership continue into the future, especially with a possible bridge over the waiting river to shore the hike. Tomorrow, our second graders, under the tutelage of Mr. Place, will be performing the animal Memorial Day concert behind the school near the baseball field at 2:30 PM. We are pleased to honor our local veterans with special seating and individual thank yous for their service.
All right, from the high school, we had a great spring concert last week on Thursday. The performances were excellent. We're looking forward to the Memorial Day Assembly tomorrow morning. Seniors have a loaded week coming up with graduation walk on Tuesday, Six Flags on Wednesday, graduation on Thursday, and prom on Friday. Ninth and 10th grade students are looking forward to the semiformal at Wian on Friday, June 7. That's all we have to say.
There's a lot of information. Thank you, guys. And it's your last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for being a part of this stuff. Really exciting to see.
Yep, so we just wanted to thank Gabby for her dedication to being a student representative. It's a wonderful thing. And so these are just some flowers from you. And as I said, you can take with you in the future. Gabby, can you share your plans for the fall with us?
So I'm going to be attending Simmons University, and I'm going to be majoring in bio on a pre-medical track.
Wow, congratulations.
But thank you so much. I love being here. This is an awesome opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I love having you.
Yeah, that's for sure. Good luck in the future. Always stay in touch. Let us know how you're doing.
Well, definitely.
Yeah, all right. All right, so next up, another great tradition that we have is introduction of Class of 2024 Saludatorian and Valedictorian.
Dr. O'Neil? I'm going to go up to the podium if that works for anyone, so I can see our audience here. So tonight, I have the honor of introducing our Class of 2024 Saludatorian and Valedictorian. I'm going to ask Maddie Dumont to come up and join me first, please. So Madeline is an incredible, goal-driven, resilient young woman who has the lofty career goal of becoming a radiologist. Maddie has a deep love for learning about sciences and Spanish. Due to her diligent and resolute nature towards her academics, she has received exceptional grades in all of her classes, culminating in a 4.77 GPA, which makes her our Class of 2024 Saludatorian. Maddie is involved with six honor societies, has a leadership role in two societies which she has the most passion for, which are assignments in Spanish. She's the president of the Spanish Honor Society, where she loves to spread her love of Spanish, and is a historian for the Science Honor Society. Maddie has also been a member of the cheer squad for four years and was captain of the cheer as well. And Maddie, why don't you tell us what your plans are for the fall?
I'm going to George Washington University, and I'm going to be majoring in exercise science on a pre-medical track.
That's amazing. Congratulations. Can somebody on my team take a picture? I'll look at you guys.
You know what? We have to move on. Yeah, I'll put the picture on the table. That's better.
Here we go. All right.
Your parents, family? Oh, no, it's your family here. All right, mom, dad, family, whoever's here, come on up. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I've never done this before.
Say cheese, everybody. Here we go. All right? Everybody ready? Cheese. Got it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, now I am going to invite Carolyn to come up as well. All right. Carolyn Powers is our Class of 2024 Valedictorian. Congratulations. She holds a 4.8 GPA and ranked number one in her class. She has taken numerous advanced placement level courses each year. She takes great pride in her academics and received the Academic Excellence Award in English, Science, and Math during her junior year. Carolyn is an active member of several honor societies, including National Honor Society, Math, Science, English, History, Spanish, and Business. She holds leadership positions of the Environmental Director for the Science Honor Society and the President of the Business Honor Society. Carolyn is also co-president of the debate team and participates in DECA, in which she's Vice President of Public Relations and Social Media. In addition to her rigorous academics and extracurriculars, Carolyn is also a dedicated gymnast. She's on the high school team as well as a club team. She also coaches gymnastics for students ages three to 10 and has spent time volunteering for a summer gymnastics program. Carolyn also stays active by running spring track. She's able to balance all of her commitments with grace and has even picked up a job at the Tropical Smoothie Cafe near her school. Carolyn, can you please tell us what your plans are for next year?
Yeah, I'm going to Stonehill. I'm majoring in environmental science. I plan on going to law school.
That's amazing. I'm a Stonehill grad, so we love it. Congratulations. We're going to have Dr. Ackerman take a picture for us. He didn't know who was going to be on duty tonight.
Three, two, one, and here we go.
All right, and I see mom, dad in the audience as well.
All right, fantastic.
Thank you.
So I just want to say real quick, you girls probably don't even realize, but I've known your families since you guys were really little. So this is like a full circle moment. It is awesome to see what you guys have done in your 12 years at Norton. I mean, to know you from this high to what you... I mean, we were kind of chuckling over here because none of us even knew what AP classes were. It's amazing. I can't speak. The rest of us, what you guys have accomplished, you should be extremely proud. We are very proud of you. We'll see you next week.
Congratulations. You guys don't have to say.
Yeah. All right, so next up, another great topic, alternate pathways at the Norton High School. So I think, oh, yeah, there you are. I'd love to be in the back seats tonight.
We have it all here.
Oh, we have it.
I want to work. I'm more than happy to share my packet.
Sure. Well, yeah, we have to. So thanks, we really wanted to come and report out some of the work that we're doing at Norton High School, really to provide pathways for every student who enters. Obviously, we just had our valedictorian and salutatorian here, so we have a huge college preparatory track. Gabby has benefited from that as well, heading off to college. So the first bit of the presentation here really just kind of was letting you know about that. But that really only captures about 75% to 80% of our student body. So the other 28% to 25% is looking to figure something else out after high school. And so one of the things that we wanted to do is to provide ways at high school where they can be prepared for success when they leave Norton. So the first sort of thing, or just a little bit organizationally, is we have two programs that we really run. One is our Chapter 74 program, and the other that's began this year and hoping to continue to grow is our Innovation Pathway in Advanced Manufacturing. And then just to give you a little bit of a sort of broad overview of some of the other exploration connections that we do at the high school as well, to give students some really experiences that could lead to a path down the road. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pilot, who's going to talk about the Chapter 74 program at the high school.
Okay, so I'm a teacher in the Chapter 74 program. And we started this probably, I don't know, maybe five or six years ago. It was, you know, a lot of work to implement this. We had to go to bat with Desi and stuff. In order to, you know, even bring one of these to the high school, you have to be able to prove that there's a waitlist at vocational school within your community. So that was a big hurdle right there. And so what we have here is three pathways within the Chapter 74 program. There's a marketing tech pathway. There's a small business ownership pathway, and then an engineering pathway. And so students select a pathway. Everyone takes the interim business course, which is kind of just a smattering of all business things. So everyone takes that mandatory course. And then before they graduate, they take three more courses within their pathway. So if it's a small business ownership pathway they choose, they may take entrepreneurship, business law, and, you know, TV Video One or something like that. They also do an OSHA 10 certification online, so we are able to provide them with that upon, you know, completion of the pathway. They also can do, take part in the CVTE program at Bristol Community College. So we have articulation agreements with them where students can take up to two classes, you know, they could take a class each semester for free at Bristol Community College. So right now, they could take things in the summer or fall like Spanish 101, Math 152, English 101, Humanities, Business, things like that. So there's a whole range of courses they can choose from depending on what Bristol is offering at that particular time right there. Oh, we also, we apply every year for a grant. So the last couple of years, we've gotten like a $10,000 grant that we use to purchase things for our programs. We purchased like a T-shirt press. We purchased new color printers, a lot of, you know, Macs and all the stuff that we use to produce the TV Video classes and stuff like that. So hopefully, waiting on that to hear about that and hopefully, we can get that 10 grand again this year because that's kind of how we self-fund a lot of our stuff. We have like a spirit box vending machine that we sell things out of, and that in turn, you know, funds more of our initiatives like DECA trips and stuff like that. So we're able to really do a good job of self-funding a lot of our things that we want to undertake with the students. So, you know, hopefully, eventually, we'd like to have a space within the school where we could have an actual, like, school store with, you know, an actual space where we can also take part in like this SBE program for DECA, which is the School-Based Enterprise. So the eventual goal would be to get some nice space in there where we can do that. But am I missing anything?
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, we do have about 50 kids in there right now. So it's growing leaps and bounds this year. A lot of sophomores and freshmen signed up, so they do have to sign up either as a freshman or a sophomore. And, you know, then they can just go from there and it's good.
Both of my boys did it. It was a great experience, yeah.
Don't forget, there's also additional funding that comes in through CEP.
Yep.
I didn't see that.
So that's always a good thing, too. We can always use whole body.
Absolutely. And so our second pathway is something that we just began this year. Similar sort of process of application through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And this one is really driven by the labor market in the area. So we work with the Mass Hire Board that really identifies areas of growth, particularly in parts of the workforce where the current workforce might be aging out, where there's going to be a lot of opportunities and a lot of economic growth. And that's one of the reasons why we chose or selected Advanced Manufacturing. We also have many partners in the area that are really involved in Advanced Manufacturing to give our students really the opportunity to have as many authentic connections as they possibly can. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Murphy.
I was going to say all that.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm Carrie Murphy. I teach Computer Science and Robotics, and I, we definitely wanted to do an innovation pathway for our students to provide something else besides just a college pathway. But this one actually includes both. So you might want to be in a STEM major, engineering, math, science, and you also might just want to go into a trade after, so it's for both. So getting kids from both pathways into one is kind of interesting. We're trying to get more people in for both angles. The classes, you should have to take one class every year, and you might already be taking it already, like physics, chemistry, engineering, some of the AP math courses, AP English, and of course, computer science and robotics. And then we have some of the woodshop classes, too, like problem solving. And so anything that you can actually, it's already in the school. We didn't have to add any more classes. We're going to add an internship slash capstone project. So if they can be an internship or they go into a manufacturing facility, then they can do that. If not, they can do the project at our school. So we purchased all these machines and have to open them and put them together and learn how to use them. And I'm working at a manufacturing place this summer to learn more about the processes and what's the best way to teach the curriculum. And then I went to Experis the other day to look at their curriculum. So we're trying to work on getting the curriculum in to have a half-year manufacturing course and a full-year internship. Let's see. And, well, you talked about why we picked manufacturing. One of the reasons I like it is because it is a pathway for both types of student. I love that. And we have some examples of like, well, if you're not going to go to college, this is kind of like a schedule you might pick. It will fit with all, even if you're in like special education classes. And it also provides mentoring and support for someone to take an AP class that didn't think they could. We know they can, but they don't think they can. So we have a whole support system there for that. And let's see. Oh, so we do have Northeastern Machine and Accurounds that's committed with us. And then we have a lot of other businesses that we've been going around talking to and explaining what we're trying to do. We had a business breakfast. We get all of them to come and talk to us about their ideas and what we wanted to do and what they think is important. Let's see. I don't know. Do you have any questions about Advanced Manufacturing? No, just happy to see it. Yeah, yes.
And really, you know, the thought is, one, we'll benefit the students as far as having that pathway that could prepare them for a career or in college as well, sort of having that hands-on experience. But it also redlines some of that relevance to the other coursework that they're doing within school, too, and hopefully provides a more kind of robust experience overall. Some of the other things that we have in that presentation are a little bit smaller scale. And what they are is really opportunities for students to explore lots of different fields within our high school when they're there. And I got to give a lot of credit to Ms. Jen Crew, who is our Guidance Academic Coordinator, who really set up a lot of these things through connections with labor unions throughout the state, actually, in Millbury, Boston, and other places. And one of these, you've actually seen before. I know we had some students present on it, which is the Pre-Aprentship Program. We just finished our third year this year in March, where we had another cohort of about 15 students who went through the whole thing. It's actually described there on one of the slides, where they have some time in the classroom, where they get some certifications such as CPR. And then they also have some time hands-on out at the facility for the Laborers Union in Hockington, where they're digging trenches, pouring concrete forms, all of those types of things, again, to get some hands-on experience. They're also, in that program, they're actually provided the connections in order to get right into the union if they'd like to. The other thing that we've seen students do with it is use that experience to really talk a little bit about what a union might mean to them if they're joining another union. So one of the students who participated is actually going into the Electrical Union and moving forward in that as well. And so we've seen that develop into sort of really interesting, especially if they take it as a junior, senior years where we've been able to be very flexible with their schedules in order to give them that hands-on experience and prepare them for the workforce. I'm going to talk, or turn it back over to Carrie to talk a little bit about the Photonics Program.
Stonehill has a Photonics Lab, and a Photonics chip is like a different kind of microchip that America is trying to produce. And so they have these programs. They have a one-year, and you can either do two or four as well. But the one-year, you can go right into the industry. So that's another trade that we're promoting. And we have someone sign up for it this week. And we just keep, we took some kids over there on a field trip. So a lot of this is like spreading the knowledge of what we can offer you and getting that out there. So Jen worked on it that, too.
And the last bit you have there has to do with something that's new this year, which is Shop Fridays. And Shop Fridays are, actually, we had two cohorts this year of about 10 and 12 students. And that was four Fridays over the course of the year, where we took basically a full day from about 8 to 1:30. And we went out to Millbury, where the Carpenters Union has their training center. And the students got to go to four different shops and experience what a training facility would be like if they were to enter that union. And the benefit of it was is they got some sort of career counseling and life lessons from the people who were there, who were instructors, who have worked in the field, and are then coming and instructing the people who are apprentices actually in the union. So they got to learn some skills. We did some things with metal framing, wood framing, finish carpentry, and concrete forms. And students, they got there, they got to do the hands-on stuff. They got to hear about the opportunities the union had. And I know one of them actually is going to be going to the information session they have every Monday night, where they have an opportunity to actually become part of the union, go through an interview. So they get kind of groomed for that process. And it's something that also allows them to know a little bit more about it. And when they go into that interview, they have a lot to talk about when it comes to why they're choosing that field. So again, this is new this year, but we had great experiences with about the 22 students we brought there. And we hope that some of them will actually choose that moving forward. And then lastly, sort of for everybody, is our partnership with Adalor School to Career. That has been a really, a partnership that's really flourished in the past few years. Lots of opportunities have been brought to Norton High School. Heidi Kazikas is the name of our person who is our liaison. But some of the things that she's brought just there, we've had a career week in April, where every day, we had a new person come, present career opportunities right out of high school. Some of them in there were Electric Boat, which is a corporation of General Dynamics. They were looking for people right out of high school to get involved. The people who work at Dispatch through 9/11, court reporters, all of those types of things that students could get involved with right out of high school. And they came and presented some information to a specific cohort. But we've had broad things as well, like the Career Fair that we do with sophomores in the fall, and our Opportunities Fair, which we had this April, where we had over 30 businesses, organizations locally for students to come and take a look at moving forward. So it was a great experience for that. And that's just been a partnership that continues to flourish, including, I would say, our internship program through the Business Department. This PowerPoint was put together by an intern that works for Ms. Murphy. So again, it's a hands-on experience of people getting to be able to really put the skills that they're learning in our school to good use, get that kind of authentic engagement.
Yes. I love getting this update because I think for so long, the track was always high school right to college, right? And I think we're learning there's more kids out there that another track... It may happen on my own son. My older son did a year of college and realized it wasn't for him, and is now in the trades and is doing very well. So I think it's important for us to kind of expose our students, you know, to different ways of doing things. And value them and show them that we all value them. 100%, yeah, exactly. Because I think there was a bit of a stigma if you weren't going to college, you know? So it's nice to see Norton is kind of, you know,
you weren't going to college, you know? So it's nice to see Norton is kind of, you know, once again, leading the charge with doing something, you know, kind of out of the box and really focusing on our students and helping them. So thank you all very much.
And we actually have a student in the Chapter Seventy-four program who is currently a business owner who.
Yes. Yes, that is true.
We have Future Day, we use that as some self-promotion.
How do we, like, how do you guys promote this to students, I guess, on one hand? And then how do you kind of promote it to, like, families as well? Like, kind of these different options of, like, what's going on?
Yeah.
How do we get them on the track, I guess?
So as far as students go, we do it through our announcements, through our TVs. We broadcast those things through MyFlex for students to do it during the LBB for a lot of it. Some of the stuff is mandatory, where they all go. All ninth, eleventh, and twelfth graders go to the opportunities fair. And we talk about it through our guidance counselors. And sometimes it's a situation, especially for the pre-apprenticeship program, and I know you can talk a little bit about the Chapter Seventy-four program, too, but it's sort of like, we identify students that this would be a really good fit for you, having conversations about sort of what their future plans are, their sort of academic profile, what they might be thinking about in the future. And so that's kind of a, not that we volunteer them for it, but we talk to them about why it would be such a good fit for them.
I would say we train the guidance counselors in the middle school and the high school about what we're trying to do. And then we go to the middle school. We used to, we actually used to go down there. And then right now, I think this year, Vinnie did most of that with the guidance counselor. So they're, they're down there telling the inquiries, like, you want, I want to pick one of these pathways. But it is, it is definitely like a hard thing to get. We, it's new, so it's hard for me to get. We have ten so far, so that's, that's great for like the first year. So we're just gonna get, keep trying to get more convincing. Okay, you want to go to college on the STEM pathway? Come to this mate, come to this pathway. You want to go to a trade? Come to this pathway. Do you even know what advanced manufacturing is? We'll tell you. And it's a huge need, so you might go that pathway. Or if you don't want to go that pathway, you can go to another trade. But you can learn about how to run a shop and organize it and work with people and have mentors.
And we've seen it grow. It's something that we mentioned eighth grade open house night. We go down, we talk about sort of course selection for the next year. All of those things have started as far as what Norton can offer you. And definitely, we've seen the business program, I think, in the first year I was here, five years ago, was the first year that it existed, that's grown to fifty students now. And it's something that, you know, definitely the innovation pathway is new this year. I think we have seven, eight committed students, but we plan to try to grow that every year. And definitely, it's one of those things, I think, when you have people who've gone through and they see the benefits of it, they then sort of word of mouth is the best marketing for that.
Yeah.
As it goes. Yeah, so.
I mean, free college classes that can transfer to, you know, somewhere else is that thing.
There's also lots of information they can send out from the guidance department, specifically in my list of events. So we get a calendar of events, we guide in the guidance department, it goes out twice a year, parents, and then follow-ups, and through parent square as well. So listing the different opportunities, especially around things like pre-apprenticeship, shop Fridays, career days, that all gets sent out as, hey, these are the things that we're doing. And so that's, that's kind of an ongoing piece.
It's always hard to get the worry and moan out. Like, we went, you took on a field trip, and Tanya helped, like, three or four kids from the middle school came with us. So we're just getting there.
Yeah, we have our, we went to Accurounds and Northeastern Machine, which are two kind of on our advisory board there as well. So the students got to see what the shop was like and sort of understand what advanced manufacturing is. It was a really fascinating experience. We also spoke to all the physics, ninth grade biology and physics classes.
Yeah, we were at.
Played some snap videos about the industrial, what industrial.
You touched upon this a little bit, but I guess, like, what are some of, like, the future goals? What's the kind of the vision, you know, year two, year four, year ten? You know, kind of, that's might be a little far out, but, you know, kind of what are we looking at, you know, what we grow up with the program and how do we kind of keep it sustainable?
Yeah. I mean, we want to continue to get people into the advanced manufacturing pathway. The other thing is sort of meeting the need that we have students, as we actually heard from two of our students tonight, are interested in biotechnology or healthcare. That's another innovation pathway growth area that's been identified by the state. So working to try to grow more pathways here as well to fit individual student needs or student desire outside of high school. So really, what it is, is getting basically students to be able to make the choice. And when they first arrive in it, really out of middle school, is talking about their future plans and what that entails for their experience at the high school and have lots of choice that would give them the skills that they can go right there. So we're looking to try not to have every single student in the high school have a pathway, but to have similar to the business and tech, fifty or so students who are really secure in what they want to do when they get out of high school, going along that track and getting those experiences. And I think the biotech is probably the next area of focus, also with nursing being part of that. And then after that, I don't know where we'll go as far as some of the needs that our community has.
And another thing we'll be doing in the next, like, five, ten years is getting more partnerships. And some companies don't know about outreach and how to work with high school students, but we're gonna keep changing that and working with more companies that do know how to do it to influence the other companies.
And then my last question, sorry. How does this kind of all factor in with Southeastern or Bristol Aggie? Kind of like, what can Norton do? I know we're kind of a little bit stuck, if you will, because we are a part of those, with those programmings. But like, kind of, what does that relationship kind of look like? You know, that if a kid doesn't get into Southeastern, then we can give them a pathway. How's that all kind of mix of work?
Well, like I said, you do have to prove a need. Like, so when we first started to, you know, try and make this program, we had to actually, you know, we named it Office Tech, we looked at the marketing. But then if you go to Southeastern, there's not a waitlist for that program. You have to be able to prove that there's a waitlist for the program at the vocational school before you can explore starting that one here. So we just, you know, we chose to call it Office Tech. It really wasn't, you know, business and technology. It really wasn't a program as Southeastern called that. So we kind of went that avenue and just kind of morphed it into like more of a small business engineering rather than just marketing. Marketing is just one of the pathways. So then you have those other two as well.
And we're, we're always joining with them to help the labor market. So we're all in it together. So we talk to them, and they come to our scene night and things like that. So we're kind of partnering with them. We're not really, but some kids go there and they don't love it, so they come and they still have the opportunity at our school, so they don't lose it.
Yeah, I mean, in some ways, it's, it's sort of competition with them as far as providing them, students who come to Norton High School as a way to, again, develop pre-professional skills that are to equip them to go into the workforce. But it's also, if students haven't made that decision in eighth grade, maybe they want to get involved in everything at the high school and then kind of find the track from there as well. So it's definitely meant to provide that experience for students, not at the vocational school. But we do work in concert with them as well and share ideas. And they brought sort of the manufacturing stuff to our steam night and things like that, too, as well. So kind of a competitive yet cooperative.
Does anybody else have anything? Yeah, sure.
So my name is Matthew Jocks, resident in town. And I just wanted to publicly thank all of you. My son is Alex Jocks, Mr. Cersei. Yeah. That's the better reaction that I could have come up with. But Mr. Cersei, Ms. Peru, Mr. Goldman, and you, you folks have all helped Alex. Alex came to us a year or so ago and said he wanted to be an electrician and didn't really know how he was gonna do that, but he wasn't gonna go to college. He said he wanted to go to college, but he wasn't gonna go to class. So that kind of ruled out. But when he said that, you know, you're kind of thinking, what is he gonna do? And he said he wanted to be an electrician, and he brought that idea forward. And I've got to say that Mr. Cersei jumped onto that and said, well, that's what we're gonna do for you. And, and he did. Alex worked very hard. He got an apprenticeship with Hanon Electric right in Easton. So he's, this year, has worked three days a week and gone to school two days a week. So he's worked twenty-four hours a week. So he's got over six hundred hours of apprenticeship. He's applied to the union, which puts him a huge leg up when he applies to the union. So, but that doesn't happen without all of you. And I mean that very sincerely, that he walked down the hallways when he told people about this, and teachers were saying, good for you. Really, this is gonna be awesome for you. Not one person ever said, boy, I don't, I don't think that's the right idea, or you shouldn't try that, or don't do this. You know, again, it'd be just the outpour of support really let him know that he was doing the right thing. So he doesn't hear until June whether he's in or not. If he's not in, Hanon has offered him a job in a non-union. So he's gonna be an electrician, one way or the other. But I also think that that doesn't happen without you. And without Dr. O'Neill at the top saying, let's try something different. And without the school committee saying, hey, it's okay to be a little bit different and try something new. And it may not be what we've done before, but we're gonna try it. And without Mr. Cersei and Ms. Peru, and they made it, they really held him accountable, but were flexible. Alex doesn't like to write, but one of the requirements was to keep a journal. But they were flexible to say, well, keep a photo journal. He said, can I do it in photos? So he brought in his photo journal. So instead of saying, no, our course says this, you were so great to him. I, I'll get emotional, but I can't thank you enough.
And more importantly than that, to see your son smile when he, when he talks about his career path. Because I mean, I've known him since he was little, so I cry, too. Then he said, I play a bet on my tongue, gonna cry tonight. But to see him smile and just be so happy with what he's doing with his life is awesome to see.
It's because people are telling me, you know, nobody's saying, don't do that. And again, I give you all the credit. Everybody here has, has helped him in, you know, the sky's the limit, so to speak. But thank you for your flexibility and.
Exactly. Had other kids asking him about it. How did you do it?
See, that's how it starts, right?
We have friends that have a son in middle school, and they're like, oh, maybe our son can do it.
Yeah, exactly. Well, thank you guys for coming and acknowledging us. Yeah, that's nice.
No, that culture is what we're looking for. I mean, that is acceptable. But it's not something that, you know, everyone can find their own path and get what we can in order to provide them with that successful start. So.
Because we're gonna fix our lives.
Right. That's what I said. Thank you, guys, for the updates. That's awesome. Thank you.
Vinnie here. Go first, because he has to get that stuff, like.
So we're gonna jump to Vinnie. Hey, where are you here? So you guys can go back to the point. We'll get you guys going.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So we're gonna jump to the middle school handbook.
Got my team up here, Assistant Principal Mr. Goldstein, Dean of Students, Mrs. Benoit. They do a lot of the handbook enforcement, I guess. And we're here to that. So we're here seeking approval of our recommendations for the handbook. I believe you guys got those in advance, and we can now answer any questions that you may have.
Did you guys have a chance to go to the middle school handbook?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns on anything that was, so we're going over what was highlighted or was taken out?
I just, I had a few comments. I just, I really liked the addition that you put in for the, the teachers, like, page six. I thought that was very well-written and very appropriate. And just, I really, I just really liked how you, we did that.
Yeah, I actually thought it was sad that we actually had to put that in the handbook, to be honest.
I agree.
Yes, I make, I make sense of why.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it in all of them, to be honest.
It does. Yeah.
Anybody have anything else?
No, I think, I mean, overall, I mean, there's obviously a lot here. I mean, what's our, I guess my, one of my questions was, it's like our corrective actions.
Yeah.
Can you just kind of highlight a little bit? Because it's just like, and again, this is where Jen always tells us education's a lot different. When we were in school, you know, it was a session detention, you're out of school, whatever, suspension, blah, blah, blah. Can you just kind of highlight some of those of like, you know, you have like a social suspension, a lunch session? Like, what is kind of, is that like the progressionary steps, kind of?
Yeah, typically, I mean, sometimes people answer with their offensive, you know, the offense is pretty tight down the line. You know, you enter at kicking somebody to your past. So it kind of depends on the entry point of the offense. But there is kind of a progressive discipline. Whenever we consequence people, it's never out of revenge. It's never out of you did this, now we're gonna do that for you. It's done to get them to change their behavior. Some people change their behavior simply with, we clarify the expectation. We need you to not run in the hallway. We need you to keep the hands to yourself and be safe. Simply clarifying the expectation. Other people, you need more of a correction. Go back, go to the back of the line. We'll wait here till everyone passes. And then other people, after so many times, need a consequence. Now you're gonna have a lunch session, and we're gonna remove that as a privilege. Social interaction, student-centered time is leverage. It's something that they like, that we can uphold. Again, get them to change their behavior in the future and meet the expectation. So there is, you're reading it right, there is kind of a hierarchy of that. One of the, a couple of things around the consequences that we put in was just the clarification that a consequence is less than a suspension and not applicable. There's nothing within the law or even within our prior handbooks. And really, their decision is final. They're the arbiters of that. They collect the facts and evidence. And as principal, I'm not going to spend two hours revisiting a half hour after school, because I need to focus on curriculum teaching, learning, planning, and teacher evaluation. So I just wanted to clarify that, that they're well-paid, well-trained, have a lot of experience to do that. And then also, like any rule, you know, like, people tell me a rule a lot, I'm kind of listening, and then I'm waiting to hear, well, what's the consequence if I don't do it? You know, the speed limit is thirty-five. Well, what if I go sixty? Tell me what hap, you get a $200 ticket? Oh, okay. That's interesting to me now. So really, it's failure to serve consequences and that what happens if someone just doesn't do it? Or a parent doesn't agree to it? What happens? And then we just kind of outlined, if you don't do it, it'll lead to a social suspension, in which you don't have access to going to after-school games, going to the next school dance that term, things like that. Because we don't want to just get into grudge matches over a thirty-minute session over a difference of opinion on some. So we did a little bit of that around the consequences and the behavior code. The other thing I'll just bring to your attention was in there was the water bottles.
Oh, she has.
That the amount of time and the amount of spills, my maintenance, I hear on the radio numerous times per, per day, water spills. We're also giving them, you know, two-hundred-fifty, three-hundred-dollar Chromebooks on every student desk. We just wanted a plastic bottle that's saleable. Even the ones that have the slide magnetic, oftentimes the kids drink, they put it down, they don't close it. We also want movement in our classrooms. Kids lose recess. We want there to be movement. And when we get all these obstacles in the way to move desks and stuff, it actually hampers teaching and learning. And, you know, it doesn't need a sixty-four-ounce thing of water to carry around all day.
Don't look over there.
I was just gonna say.
Mine's slightly smaller.
Times that by two-hundred-six.
And it's at the floor, it disrupts the entire class.
Yeah, and they sound like bombs that come off. And so, you know, it seems, but it is a disruption to teaching and learning and all those things. So we just wanted to put that in handbooks. People don't run and buy the Kid Stanley for $50 as part of the back-to-school clothes and outfits, just to get that out there ahead of time. Also, communications, we're guiding that in the future, as we prepare for like our preschool communications. Again, people don't go on and feel like the pressure to buy that for their kid, because I gotta have that. We just want kind of the sports water bottles. And then we just, the other new thing around was the buying and selling of objects. We're not gonna be involved in, people not, you know, we're not, we don't want kids buying and selling.
We're not either.
Things like that. And I put a rationale as to why that's not good enough. So those are really like the, the major changes. Others was like the concussion policy of district law, we put that in. And some recommendations from our attendance committee, we made those changes.
And what do we have, and I know it's been a, not hot button anymore, but in terms of cell phones, what do we have? Is it different from the high school to the middle school to the yale school? Probably down to the Sunday school, just about?
We don't have them out in the middle school.
Awesome.
Kids can bring them in. We don't, they understand that they're a vital communication tool. So after school, kids are on their cellphone. At school, it's not a big deal. We, we really don't have that many cellphone issues. Occasionally, we have disrespect around a cellphone. Like, put that away, it should be a backpack. The kid is insubordinate and doesn't follow through or repetitive. But it's not so much like the phone itself. It's the behaviors around clarification of expectations. But we don't have that as a practice. Our teachers, we find lunches are a lot louder because the kids are talking.
Good.
During COVID, when they're on the phones, lunch is pretty peaceful.
Yeah.
During lunch duty, which we primarily do, you could get stuff done, kind of. But so, but it's causes the kids to learn how to talk and communicate. But we have less issues coming from it. I think most of our kids realize no one else is texting on that thread, no one else is sending something, no one else is posting something. So once we get, kind of get over that threshold, that kind of FOMO kind of goes away, because people realize no, no one else has it out and is using it either. So it's been good for us this year, that is. But again, after school, before school, like before class, kids have phones on them.
And they can ask a teacher permission if they need to text home. Just say, oh, can I text my parents? I forgot my gym clothes. They just, we just ask them to ask, so we know.
Yeah, we have so many times, kids with sports and clubs, they, and they just ask them, just step over there, you can use it. Ew, I would say, was it less of an issue this year than in the past?
Definitely. It's just louder at lunch, but that's, we deal with it. But it's good because they do communicate.
So the only question I had, it's just under Office Administration management, you highlighted filming or recording a teacher without permission, which I like, but is it, is it possible to add, like, students as well? Right? Because.
Um, yeah.
Like, students shouldn't be, you know, we have this issue with, and listen, this is society, right? Something's going on, and people, their first thought is to take out their phone instead of trying to, you know, help.
Yes.
So I just wondered if maybe putting not just a teacher, but other students in there, that it might.
Yeah, we'll expand it to that. I will make that change. We'll put that through there. So you guys can, you know, vote to amend this part with that addition, and we'll make the change.
Okay. Do you guys all?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Anybody have anything else on that? Okay, so now we have to, is there a motion to approve the Norton Middle School Parent Student Handbook for 2024, 2025, as written with the amendment of adding?
We include enough students.
What I said earlier.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call those a favor?
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a great time.
Yeah, enjoy the play. All right, so do you want to try to do the high schools?
I suppose.
You guys are here.
Yeah.
Your dates.
Your dates.
Really?
Okay.
Straight up.
We're just talking about the agenda. We've got a winter at seven to go to the high school. Yeah, sorry. All right.
So I'm gonna skip, that's a similar process that we've used in the past, as far as getting feedback on the handbook here. Just given to the attendance, similar to pretty much the exact same language that we anticipate being everywhere else, coming from District Committee on Attendance. It's in there. Our honor code, this is a response to students and faculty feedback as far as including AI as something that is a constant concern. That's both mathematics with the ability to take pictures of mathematical problems. And basically, if anyone's actually looked at Photomath in their phone, it tells you all the steps, gives you all those things, which could be a tremendous learning tool. But also, it's something that if a student needs to have it completed, they can do it very quickly and move on. So the way that we phrase that was just that teachers couldn't direct students to use AI, but that it was something that, you know, if you're trying to submit something as your own work that is not yours, that is a violation of our honor code. So that was something that we included in there. One thing that we noted at the end is I think we're gonna do a little bit more robust dive into that with students and faculty, into what AI means and what the sort of capabilities of it are. There are other things certainly coming down the pike as far as AI-generated photos and videos and voice recordings and those types of things that, you know, our handbook might need to be updated in order to deal with appropriately. PBIS is the other thing that we kind of included. This is really our first full year of implementation. Last year, we did sort of our groups, our coaches, our student group, talking about sort of what to roll out. We rolled something out in May, at the end of last year. This year, we've rolled it out throughout the course of the year. We've collected a lot of data on it, gotten a lot of feedback on sort of how to make it happen at the high school level, and are making adjustments sort of accordingly. When we took our last data point, when we had electronic ticket submissions, we had about seventy percent of our staff awarding incentivized tickets to students who have done the appropriate thing within their classes. But we kind of revamped that, looking at a paper ticket system. We've also sort of taken some feedback and kind of paused our implementation in order to try to get additional teacher buy-in as far as the incentive. That's something that we found is sort of developmentally, our teachers and our students really don't buy into the incentives quite the same way as elementary. That's no surprise. But how do we sort of also put in place a lot of That's something that we found is sort of developmentally, our teachers and our students really don't buy into the incentives quite the same way as elementary. That's no surprise. But how do we sort of also put in place a lot of the sort of predictive consequences, things like that, that our teachers are looking for within the PBIS system? So we're still sort of implementing that, collecting feedback, revamping it. But I think the first year was a pretty good success. We just got to then kind of figure out what works best and move forward from there with it. So we included our behavior matrix, which wasn't complete at the last time we tried to submit our handbook, which we have here as well. Just our concussion policy. Again, that was something that was a very hot button issue about a decade ago. And I think that some of our awareness of it and sort of adjustments to it has dwindled. So we wanted to pull it back into the handbook, to make sure that everyone saw it and was responsive to it within the classroom. The C-stag, the Comprehensive Threat Assessment Guidelines language. And so this is something that is going on at the middle and high school that we actually already stepped out, but earned a grant through Mass General Hospital and also the Mass Partnership or Youth Partnership. And what that is, is really clinicians from Mass General Hospital, our staff locally, and it's really cutting-edge research on the best way to respond to potential threats. So it's people who are very familiar with the environment, very familiar with the student, collaborating with law enforcement, clinicians, and those who are outside the school environment to talk about cases when students make threats to themselves or to others. We really go about what the action plan from that is. It's a very regimented process that has specific sort of protocols for conducting interviews, collecting evidence, and then a checklist of decision-making tree there as well. So we wanted to make sure that was in the handbook. It's something that we started last spring with training for all our administration clinicians and SROs. So that's something that we wanted to include in the handbook so everyone understood what it was about. Remove all sort of references to school grades, replace them with power school. Credit recovery and summer school, that's something that we're kind of working on when we have students who don't pass the course for the year. What are the remedial efforts that we can make? And so we had one line that was essentially just, if you're below 50, not eligible for summer school. And what we're trying to do is make that a little bit more data-driven, responsive to our INTSS structures, where we ask teachers to talk about what are the critical skills that those students can recruit. So rather than repeating sort of courses in the summer, it's trying to focus on the skills that you need to develop in order to move forward in those classes. And so that really is just another process through SST, which is our student study team that really looks at, you know, what those appropriate things are for that student in order to recover credit if they fail for a year. And then fee adjustments, we're looking to raise dues. I don't, we don't have anyone at school who knows when they last went up. That's how long ago it was. We had an advisor who was advising in 2005 who said they were at 40. So in order to, you know, the dues all go back to the student. They're just for student activities, seed money for fundraisers, help to offset ticket prices for prom, yearbook, all that kind of stuff. So we just, with our expenses rising, we're looking to raise those by $5 this year. And then the last thing there just will be fixing the pagination and table of contents based on some of the new additions as we go there.
So just a quick question that I have. Is it, is it possible to, like the teacher portion that was in the middle school, is that possible to adopt for all schools?
I don't know if you're familiar with what it says.
We just read it.
Okay.
Oh, you didn't read it?
But yeah, we can, yeah, we'll take a look at.
So I think that and I think the filming of...
So that's already in there.
It is, okay. All right. I didn't see it highlighted.
And that's actually the law. You're not allowed to film anyone without their consent.
Okay. So do we have it written as anyone or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That was all I had. Does anybody have any else?
This one's touchy because I don't know how that actually all works here, but like the bathroom says like, I'll just read it because I think it's easiest. Students may only access the bathroom or any other area with a valid staff-approved pass. This prevents students from using the bathroom during unstructured times such as passing time. Students should report to the bathroom, blah, 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 whatever. My thing is, is like, I'm assuming there's issues that happened during passing time, that kids are either jammed into the bathroom doing who knows what in the bathroom. I guess my concern is, it makes a little bit more sense to go during passing time to get to class so you're not getting disrupted class to come out of class. So I don't know, I guess you just kind of talk about that a little bit, what the reason was?
So the way we kind of conceived of that is because of some of the traffic that's happening during passing times, it's not, Anne Tully could probably vote for this, it's not, it's not students who are going in there to use the bathroom for appropriate purposes. So since students who are trying to do that are unable to use the bathroom during passing time, we chose to limit it for all students and try to flush it out so that, you know, again, they're taking a pass from class. But with our e-hall pass system, what that also allows is, you know, we have some students who have conflicts. And when they take a pass from their teacher, there's actually limitations. Like it'll say, you can't have a pass right now because there's, the hallway isn't available for you because there's someone you have an issue with who's using the restroom right now. So it helps with a lot of issues from social conflict, a conflict, substance abuse, all manner of things. We're really kind of the genesis of that.
And so that's also a hole in our supervision. The way that our bathroom duty works is based on periods, so we don't have anyone who like has a duty during that time. What has happened is that students who really need to use the bathroom, go quickly to their class, get a pass, use the bathroom and go back. So the amount of time that they're missing from class time is diminished and they actually can use the bathroom because there's less people in there. And I think Mr. Shaughnessy and Ms. Benner, we're standing in front of a lot of bathroom doors during passing time, we tell you, like if there are students who express a need that they need to go in, yeah, sure. Like we're not going to deny a kid for, you know, we don't lock the doors or anything if they're there. And it's typically monitored by humans who can respond to what might be an emergency as well.
Anything else?
Is there a limit on how many bathroom passes they can get?
Four. Right now, four per day.
And then we have a subsequent list of students who have medical issues or other circumstances that might need a higher number of passes.
And right now, the way that we have our system is our, we only open our cafeteria bathroom during lunch and that's, that's what allows students to use that so they can go at lunch as well for another time and wash hands and do whatever else is necessary.
Anything else?
I guess I'll bring up the cellphone. How are we doing with cell phones?
Not great. I mean, I would love to do that. So I mean, that's, that's a constant battle. That's something that we hear. We have a Culture and Climate Committee and that's something actually we talked about today as far as how we want to try to approach it next year. You know, previously, we have the policy in place as far as off and away, but talking about trying to be a bit of a unified front on how we're going to enforce that within classrooms is what we're thinking. That was kind of a note there. We were going to try to investigate some other ways to maybe do this as a school-wide thing. So again, teachers can kind of support each other on what the expectation is and it's, then it's more consistent for students. So it's predictable as far as what the different classrooms are going to request for that. So that's definitely something we're going to kind of work with next year as far as school-wide, you know, expectations and then maybe work towards an adjustment to our handbook based on cell phones there.
We feel a lot of staff requests for us to pitch a cellphone policy to you all again and have that be approved. So that's something, again, we want to look at and...
But we want to pilot a few programs and see what we get.
Yep.
All right. Anything else on that?
Yes. When was the last time Saturday school ever happened?
It's two years ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so. And that was really just a value added to it. I mean, it was basically, as Mr. Hayward was kind of saying, a student would say, if I don't go to Saturday school, I then get suspended. So I'm going to...
There's a lot of transportation issues and people not showing up, but us paying a stipend, so we're going to cut that and things like that.
Similarly, we look for creative times, lunch attentions, LLB detections, those types of things, suspension privileges and things as well.
Okay. Are you guys ready to get to a vote?
I just have a quick question. Do we have any, and this may not be part of today, but I had talked to Dr. O'Neil too about just wanting some more information on our like district's overall attendance and how that looks because I noticed that obviously it's been added, so maybe by school or like I said, overall.